Welcome, everyone, to the February 24th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone at home and here. We have a couple items on our agenda today and a guest speaker, so we're looking forward to that. I wanted to let people know that between the Work Session 1 and 2, we're going to do the motions that Councilor Zelenka has put on the table before you. Okay, so we'll start out as Assistant City Manager.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And I'm just going to turn it over to Matt McCray.
All right, thanks. Mayor, City Council. My name is Matt McCray. You've all met me, I know. I'm the Climate and Energy Analyst for the City of Eugene. For those listening at home, a quick reminder that we've -- this is one in a series of conversations about setting greenhouse gas reduction targets for the City of Eugene. We had a December 16th, 2015 session where we talked about the background of the climate science. On February 10th, we talked about the background on the carbon budget concept. And then just two days ago, on February 22nd, we got some more background from Andrew Rice from Portland State University, and you all received a description of the 350 target for Eugene. We have 45 minutes today. The -- I'm going to introduce Angus Duncan, who's going to be our guest presenter. He's going to share information from the state level with you all for about 15 minutes. I have a couple of very brief comments after he's done, and then we'll save the rest of the time for conversation. So to introduce Mr. Duncan, he's the founding president of the Bonneville Environmental Foundation that supports renewable energy development and watershed restoration across the Pacific Northwest. He worked in private sector, in renewable energy project development, in state and local government as a member and chair of the Northwest Power Planning Council, and is Director of Energy Policy for the U.S. Department of Transportation. In 2004, he chaired the committee that drafted Oregon's first climate change goals and strategy that was then adopted by the government, the governor and legislature. And in 2008, he was appointed to chair Oregon's now-standing Global Warming Commission. He's got a ton of experience to share with us, so thanks for being here. And really, before I hand it over, that's my last piece, is just to publicly thank you so much for making the time and taking the effort to join us for the conversation.
Welcome.
Members of the council, thank you very much. As Matt indicated, my name is Angus Duncan, and I am speaking today, I think, with my Global Warming Commission hat on, although I have the BEF hat. I also represent the Natural Resources Defense Council, NRDC, working on utility, energy, and carbon efficiency issues in the Pacific Northwest and up into the Intermountain States and, you know, a couple other hats, if depending on which warrant the bailiff shows up with that day. And I will also acknowledge, you know, your Commissioner Zelenka and an old co-conspirator of mine from many years, particularly in the electric utility business. But I also managed to snooker Allen into joining the Global Warming Commission, and we're very glad to have him. So I'm going to try to heed Matt's admonitions and work my way through the inevitable PowerPoint, you know, fairly quickly, and then try to come back and see if we can spend the time talking about how the City of Eugene is moving forward on its climate agenda and on setting targets. And with any luck at all, I will figure this out, and the slides won't show up upside down. So in 2004, Governor Kulewski put together a global warming advisory group to try to do not just a goal-setting, but also an implementation plan. And we came up with recommended goals for the state of Oregon, three of them. One that by -- this is 2004. So by 2010, we wanted to have taken that, you know, what looked like an inevitably upward trending line, about 1% to 2% every year since we started measuring in 1990. We wanted to turn that one around and at least flatten it if possible, bend it back downhill by 2010. By 2020, we wanted to be 10% below our 1990 levels, which is where the line starts there. And by 2050, we wanted to be at least 75% below 1990 levels. The only one of those three goals that has sort of any grounding in anything other than coming out of my back pocket one night is the 2050 goal. And at the time, the IPCC, the UN panel of scientists was recommending, you know, not less than 75% reduction globally. So we simply grabbed that as a good 2050 goal, understanding that many of us voting for it at the time, you know, weren't going to see whether we made it in 2050 or not. But you needed a goal out there, and it should have some grounding in science, and that was the one we had. The other two goals, though, were deliberately chosen to be both stretch goals and achievable goals. We thought at the time that simply arresting the growth, you know, in the succeeding five years was going to be a challenging goal all by itself. And then we wanted at least an intermediate goal between there and 2050. So the 2020 number basically literally came out of my back pocket as I was, you know, drafting the report for the governor late one night. That's about as scientific as we got, so I commend you for making more of an effort than that. But I also commend to you the relationship between having goals that are grounded, having goals that put, that require reach, but also having goals, excuse me, that are achievable, and having intermediate, basically, check-in goals, so that, you know, we are not simply deferring, we are working on this until we hit our scientific goal, by which time it's too late to have achieved anything. So how did that all work out for us? Well, as it turned out, one of the things you, it's really handy to have when you're trying to set goals, is good data, and we didn't have it in 2004. Our most current data, when we looked at this, were numbers from, I think, '97 or '98. We didn't even realize that by 1999, we would have, that Oregon would have peaked in its greenhouse gas emissions. So got to have good data, got to have reasonably current data. This is something we're still working on at the state level, trying to get numbers that are never more than two years out of date, and to the extent possible, the critical numbers, not more than one year out of date. And we're actually almost there. And the fact that we peaked in '98 or '99 and actually flattened the line subsequently says, you know, that was a good goal. We had to work to get, actually, to get the line to stop going up and to stay level while demographics and, if you will, economic appetites were still driving it upwards. So a sideways-moving goal, a sideways-moving line, you know, is a good sort of starting point, but it's not a sufficient one. And even those last two or three years where it looks like it's going downhill, those are recession years. So there's no guarantee that we really have achieved anything other than arresting the increase in emissions. But we do look forward to some of the measures that we have proposed and some of the measures that are starting to take hold. And so I also commend to you these lines, which are almost unreadable, sorry about that. But we adopted a set of energy efficiency recommendations, which variously the Energy Trust of Oregon and utilities like E-Web, you know, were undertaking, and that pulled our projected line going forward down again. We looked at, we looked at, the state adopted one of our recommendations, which was a renewable portfolio standard that aimed at being, having 25% new renewables meeting state loads by 2025. Projected that out, and that brought the line down a little further. The orange line is kind of interesting, because you would have expected that one to be much bigger. That's the agreement that we negotiated five years ago with Portland General Electric, that it would close Oregon's only in-state coal plant by 2020. And when that happened, then you'd pull that coal plant out of our projections, and that drops our line down again. But interestingly, it doesn't drop our line down as dramatically as you would think when you take a 585-megawatt coal plant offline, because there are so many other sources, just utility sources, let alone transportation, forestry, and ag. Add in the low-carbon fuel standard, which the legislature finally confirmed earlier this year, and that's the projected line that we see for Oregon as of about 2012. It's still going downhill at least until 2025, you know, when demographics and consumption start bending it back upwards again. So it's a beast, you have to keep feeding. And you have to keep feeding it, because that's really the trajectory we should be on as a state, and we are not. Since we are not, that goes to sort of another question about goal-setting or target-setting, which is, on the one hand, you need to look at everything if you're going to hit that goal. On the other hand, you can't assault everything immediately. You do need to be strategic in setting your near-term targets and near-term measures. And that's what we tried to do. So this is another way of looking at our emissions and the different shares that different sectors have. Clearly, electricity use and transportation are by far our largest ones. And actually, if you pull out of that just light-duty vehicles from transportation, so that's the cars we drive and the light trucks and delivery trucks and so on, that's actually about 25% of Oregon's greenhouse gas emissions all by itself. Coincidentally, if you pull just the coal, the coal share of the electricity sector out of electric utilities, it's another 25%. If we could get control of our light-duty vehicles and control of our coal plants, we would be attacking, you know, 50% of the emissions that we have to reduce as a state. Doesn't mean we can ignore all those others, does mean we have to focus down on these ones. So let me just go through and talk to you a little bit about what we're doing as a state, and you will see the intersection between that and what has to be done by local governments as well. So it turns out, we also peaked in vehicle miles traveled as a state a little bit later. I can't see that, it looks like about 2006 or 2007. Yeah, and our greenhouse gas emissions for transportation alone peaked a little bit later than that. So arguably, pretty much all of the reduction in transportation is recession-related. Means we do not have a handle on, you know, everything we need to. But it does help that our VMT peaked then and has started to go down, if we can keep it going down. And also, as you can see from the orange sector, which is the larger vehicles, so that's basically, I'm sorry, the orange is the gasoline. And the troublesome thing about that is that it does bump back up again as we come out of the recession. So it's just reinforcing that we don't have a handle on our light-duty vehicles. We did a statewide look at what we'd have to do to get to our 2050 goal. This is an ODOT process, and essentially, what we have to do is pretty much everything. So it's land use choices and bringing VMT down, it is converting our vehicle fleet out of gasoline and diesel, and if we're converting it, as we probably are, into electricity, plugging it into a grid that is substantially less carbon-intensive than the current one is. It is using transportation IT technologies to reduce congestion and reduce, also reduce VMT, reduce driving around looking for parking spaces. It is mode shifting to transit and bike and PED, and ultimately, it's pricing. And we actually figured out, using the state's GreenStep model, which we developed with ODOT, that we could get to a minus 75% by 2050 in transportation. The most important way we got there, you know, other than punching all of the buttons, is to punch the vehicle conversion, fleet conversion button the hardest. The single most important thing we would have to do is we would have to have a fleet by 2050 that is at least 50% electric or the equivalent in biofuels, and it would have to be plugging into a grid, which is also compliant with Oregon's at least 75% below 1990 levels by 2050. So that's a big lift, but it also is the most important single one, and that's why we go back and we focus on cars and coal. There we go. This is another way to reinforce that point. I just went out and looked at different cities around the country that had emissions roughly comparable to what we were facing in Oregon, depending on whether you lived in Pacific Core Territory, in PGE Territory, or in this case, I used Eugene, but any consumer-owned utility territory. And getting the carbon equivalent of miles per gallon out of the electrical grid, you can see that if you live in Pacific Core Territory, you know, you're about where Wichita, Kansas is, and, you know, if you plug an electric vehicle in in Wichita, Kansas, you're getting about 35 miles to the gallon carbon equivalent, which is not bad, but not nearly as good as it can be and as it has to be. And I don't have to belabor this, but you can see, depending on how much coal and how much gas you have in your grid, you can get, you know, over 100 miles per gallon carbon equivalent, or you can be back down, or you might as well buy a new internal combustion engine, because you can right now, today, get 35 or 55 miles per gallon from an internal combustion engine. We have to do better than that. We have to do what Seattle or frankly Eugene does, you know, when we convert our fleet. And this is Oregon's problem. It's not Eugene's problem, but it definitely is Oregon's, and that is that although we have made the decision to shut down the Boardman Plant, although the state of Oregon, of Washington, made a subsequent decision that it would shut down the two Centralia plants, we are still taking power from this arc of coal plants around the Intermountain West. And even E-Web, correct me if I'm misstating this, Allen, but I think even E-Web, because it's buying system power from time to time, has some coal in the mix. Not very much, but it almost certainly has some. We have to back that coal out. Again, apologies for the slide, I should have made it brighter. But I'm putting this up just to draw the contrast. So if we take Oregon's greenhouse gas reduction goal, and we, which is that slanted line down, and we measure it against where the IRPs for both Pacific and PGE are headed today, where coal is coming out of the system, but it's largely being replaced by baseload gas plants, the practical effect of that is that the line, the emissions line, goes sideways indefinitely. It is not approximating where it needs to be. There is a bill in the legislature, which I'm heavily involved in and tracking even from a distance, and which we hope we'll get out of this legislature, that would do something different. So the top graph there is the one you just saw with the IRP stretching away to the right. The bottom graph, I'm sorry?
IRPs are...
IRPs, what did I say?
Integrated Resource Plan.
I'm sorry, Integrated Resource Plan. I keep talking, I'm talking to Allen all by himself here. So these are the utilities' plans for what resources they're going to rely on to meet load, you know, over the next 20 years. And in the case of both PGE and Pacific, it's as coal plants come out, they're replaced by gas plants. Gas plants are about half as carbon-intensive as the coal plants they're replacing, but that's offset, once again, by demographic upward pressures and consumption upward pressures. So you end up with a line that goes sideways. If we are able to ramp out those coal plants by 2030, as this bill would propose to do, if we are able to commit the two utilities to not the existing renewable portfolio standard through 2025, but one through 2040 that will require them to meet at least 50% of their load by 2040 from new renewables. If we pile those new renewables on top of the existing hydro that the state of Oregon relies on, you know, two things happen. One is that our electric utilities are actually down below that trajectory, which is their proportional share of the state's greenhouse gas goals by 2040, and, I'm sorry, by 2035, which is as far out as we and their IRPs go. But with additional renewables coming into the system, we expect them to be, meet our interim 2035 goal, and also be on a trajectory to meet the state's 2050 goal. And the other thing, effect that has, of course, is if we are able to do our shift of our light-duty vehicle fleet to electric, then the electric, those vehicles are plugging into the grid that they have to plug into, and we have the potential for meeting both our transportation and our electric utility goals by 2050. This is just another last way of looking at it, which is that these are, this is a wedge analysis that the Global Warming Commission did over the last year to say, if we were going to try to pull all of our system into compliance with our state goal, which is the black line, the almost invisible black line, if we do what we're proposing to do with power generation, that's the purple wedge, if we do what we're proposing to do with transportation, the orange wedge, that gets us to a significant degree closer to our overall state line. It still doesn't get us all the way, and so we illustrated trying to meet the balance with a carbon tax, could also have been a carbon cap and trade, that would pull all of the sectors down toward or in compliance with that line. So it means if we get this bill through the legislature this year, we will be a substantial degree closer to our trajectory, but we'll still not be there, and it means we'll have to come back in the legislature next time around and try to adopt a cap or a tax. That gets us to a significant chunk of our state goals, but again, it only gets us so far, even in transportation, if all we've done is flip the fleet. It means we haven't done the land use measures, we haven't done the mode shift to transit by PED, you know, we haven't done a number of other measures that we rely on the communities to do. It also means that we need the reinforcement from the federal level, as does the City of Eugene, particularly from the fleet fuel economy standards, which would help drive that electrification of the fleet, and from the Clean Power Plan, which, you know, right now is under a Supreme Court stay, but we expect the district court to, or I'm sorry, the appeals court, to rule on it by June or July, and we're hopeful that it goes forward, then reinforcing both what you're doing and what we're doing. And I'm going to stop there, because I assume we will come back and talk about targeting in more detail, and pass it on to Matt.
Great, thanks. And I just have a couple of quick thoughts to add to the conversation. One, and I think Angus is making this point, that if we're going to meet our targets, whatever they are, state and federal action are going to be crucial for us to get there. So we can set very aggressive targets, but it's going to be, we won't get there without that kind of support. And the other thing I wanted to touch on was a comment from Monday, and just, you know, why would we, Eugene, you know, stretch out and lead in this way and take these steps to reduce our emissions? And I just want to remind you all that we are in a large and very growing group, rapidly growing group of cities that are taking action like this. We are not by any means out alone. We are, you know, we're looking at a more aggressive target than some, but we're certainly in good company of a number of cities around the world that are taking action like this. And in fact, I just wanted to call your attention to a few. The one that we're looking at most closely, which is Fort Collins, Colorado, they've just set a community-wide target to reduce their emissions 80% by 2030. They're getting help from Rocky Mountain Institute to figure out exactly how that can be done. They're working on and plan right now. They're about a year ahead of us in setting that target. And so there's a lot for us to learn from looking at them. Naturally, they're going to have some differences, because they're in the Rocky Mountains, and there are different community conditions, but they're very similar to us in terms of population, having a university in the area. But there are other cities that have similarly aggressive goals. Sydney, Australia, aiming for 70% reduction by 2030. Vancouver, B.C., looking to be carbon-neutral by 2050. Melbourne, Australia, looking to be carbon-neutral by 2020. So there are some very aggressive targets that have been set out, and just wanted to put that into the conversation. And so the rest of the time is for you all, questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you both. So Mike, you're up first, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. That was very good. Question I've always had, why doesn't the state classify hydro as renewable? And should they? Why not?
So the utility industry certainly regards hydro as renewable. And I don't know anybody in the state who doesn't regard hydro as renewable. The distinction, I think it's important to draw, is between existing renewable and new renewable, and that's the distinction the RPS draws. But we expect a pretty wide diversity of new renewable resources to be applied to meeting the renewable portfolio standard. But the number I gave you a little bit earlier about how, if we're able to make those goals with Pacific and PGE, we would not only be in compliance with our state goals, but the state as a whole would be somewhere between 70 and 90% renewable. But the only way we get to 70 and 90% renewable is if we count our existing hydro base and add on to the top of that our solar and our wind and other smaller resources. That's the renewable base.
I suppose it's an E-Web policy, then. My question spawns from the point that here in Eugene, E-Web, the requirements for the percentages of purchase of renewable is new renewable, and we have to sell very expensively-produced hydro power outside this market while we have to bring in very expensive types of power by rule at E-Web and end up with an inefficient system. So I was just trying to understand that better.
Well, so I guess the other thing I would want to say to you is that when I first started working in the wind industry, in the private sector, this was, I don't want to overdate myself here, but it was back during the frontier days, and wind was being generated at about $250 a megawatt hour. And a lot of people asked, this is down in California, where I worked for a while, because that's where the business was, and people said, "California, why are you doing this?" The answer was, you don't get a technology like that down to cost competitiveness unless you're willing to pay some more upfront. That $250 a megawatt wind that we were building down there is now building for somewhere between $60 and $70 a megawatt hour, and it is still dropping significantly. So my foundation, along with four other consumer-owned utilities, all from the state of Washington, you know, we built a wind farm 10 years ago. We brought it in for about $70 a megawatt hour. Today, we could probably build it in the same wind regime, same access to transmission, for somewhere close to $50 a megawatt hour. So the way you get technologies to be competitive is you buy them and you create market pull on the technologies. It is instructive also to go back and look at some of the really hair-tearing editorials that were written back in the 1930s, when the states and the region and the federal government proposed to build two large dams on the Columbia River, Bonneville and Grand Cooley, that we would never be able to use the power, it cost way too much. You know, Portland was doing just fine with gaslights, right? And now it's the cheapest power on the planet. But it wasn't when we started, and neither are wind and solar, but they are well on their way to becoming so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next up is Claire.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and sharing your insights and background. This is really helpful as we think about what we're doing here locally. For example, I thought that once the Boardman Plant shut down, you know, coal wasn't going to be a factor in our carbon emissions, so I wasn't aware of the fact that the other utilities in the state were drawing from coal-powered sources for their energy, so I think that's really important information. I had a couple of questions. Does or how does the state climate goals and measurement take into account the fact that we sit along a major transportation corridor where cars and trucks are traveling through our state, they're not interstate? And do we also include in those measurements aircraft who are flying through the state and their emissions?
So both really good questions, and the even bigger problem with sort of through traffic, you know, on I-5, you know, is less the cars and more the trucks, you know, especially the big over-the-road trucks. So we actually do count the emissions in our inventory. We basically allocate a chunk of emissions based on assumed fuel efficiency of the vehicles, how many there are and how many miles they drive. We do also take into account, we allocate a share of aircraft emissions associated with takeoffs and landings within... with takeoffs and landings within the state of Oregon. So we have them in the inventory, which is not quite the same thing as saying we know what to do about them. The truth is that both of those sectors are sectors where you and we are going to rely heavily on the federal government. We rely on the federal government, particularly for fuel economies, for the over-the-road vehicles, and the federal government actually has adopted some sort of equivalently stringent rules for over-the-road trucks to the light-duty trucks. But the way we get at those is, at least primarily, is through national standards. There are some things that we can do, and we do have measures in our state strategy. For example, for installing electrical plugins at truck stops so that we don't have trucks sitting there and running their diesels. And that's valuable, both for reducing carbon emissions and for reducing local airshed pollution. So there are some things that we can do. There are some things we can and do do at the Portland Airport, for example, to reduce emissions associated with moving the planes in and out of the gates, but pretty limited. And there are now adopted international standards for fuel efficiency for new aircraft coming into the fleet. They are not very stringent. It's what happened, the bigger the committee, the lower the average. And so there's a lot of work to still be done on that. But in both of those cases, we do necessarily rely on the federal government. You saw that string of coal plants out there that I mentioned and that you referenced. And the truth is, if we stop taking coal-generated electricity from those coal plants, that doesn't necessarily shut them down. We can shut down Boardman because it's within our boundaries. It's harder to, we can't control the plants, we can influence them. And if we withdraw and affect our business, that puts additional pressure, particularly on some of those older plants, to shut down. But we rely heavily on the president and EPA and their Clean Power Plan to really have an impact on the coal plants and the gas plants. So we can do what we can, you can do what you can, but the federal government has to carry its share of the burden as well.
Can I speak really quickly to your question about local emissions? When we measure emissions for our Eugene carbon, our greenhouse gas inventory, when we look at air travel, we're trying to focus on specifically travel from Eugenians, not others that are coming and going. And similarly with road travel, we try to exclude the emissions of vehicles that are passing through on I-5.
Going back to the state measurement, so if there were new standards or as new standards came online for truck emissions, then you would adjust the model to take that into account?
Right. We would adjust our inventory to reflect that.
And then this question's a little bit more directed to Matt, but obviously you're both welcome to respond. I just wanted to ask you to remind us, to some extent, how reaching these goals fits, is connected to our land use policy and efforts to reduce sprawl and how it connects with local transportation options.
Right. So the largest way that land use decisions influence greenhouse gas emissions is it affects the transportation and how people get around. So overall, the more dense and the more mixed use a community is, the easier it is for people to get around by bike or by walking, and the more cost-effective a bus system is, for example. So that's really where the large-scale changes are. At the same time, when we look at emissions from buildings, multifamily housing and smaller homes have a smaller footprint than single-family homes, for example. So the more we allow, provide that type of housing for people, that also reduces emissions from housing. There is another effect of, if we do expand our urban growth boundary or expand for development, it removes some areas that are used for carbon sequestration. So if we move into forest land, we reduce that ability of that forest to sequester carbon. It's probably not huge, but it's something. And similarly, even if we move into farmland, there's carbon sequestered in the soil. And so development into those areas reduces that ability.
And if I can just add one observation that goes back to your target setting. It is a characteristic of urban areas that they are, they are just by definition and design more carbon efficient than suburban areas or rural areas. If New York City were its own state, it would be by a substantial margin the most efficient, carbon-efficient state in the union, not because they've fixed the steam tunnels, they have and still leaks, but because they are so compact, so dense. People live substantially in common wall dwellings, in apartments, that are by definition also more efficient. The corridors are dense and can support transit. And one of the things that is worth observing, I don't know whether you have Zipcar or CarToGo here in Eugene yet, but if you take a look at them, and those are really interesting sort of intermediate modes that we need to figure out how to take advantage of, rather than everybody having to have a car and get into it all the time. So I use it a lot. But one of the things I have observed is that, sort of like everybody else in the transportation game, they want a cream skim. And by cream skim, I mean, they do better if their cars are in use a lot, which means they have to be in relatively dense areas. We see a lot of them downtown during the day, by 5:30, they're all gone. Because people, downtown is dense enough that people will make use of them to drive home or go do an errand. So the density issue doesn't mean we have to do away with single-family detached homes. It does mean that our land use planning needs to look at opportunities to increase densities, where you lose something if you're not in a gracious neighborhood, but you gain something because you're in an urban neighborhood with access to amenities and necessities. So finding ways for our communities to preserve some of our single-family neighborhoods, but find ways to increase densities, especially in corridors, transit corridors, is a really important part of succeeding in the transportation side.
Thank you.
We have two more people in the queue for this round, and if we have time, we go to another round. But we're trying to hit the, as close as we can to the 12:45, so just letting you know that. Very briefly, I want, I'll put you in the, another one in the queue. Actually, the plugin, so you don't pollute or use power by idling, trucks idling, actually came out of our LaRappa here in Eugene. I want to give them credit for that. And I wanted to say that we did have, we have Zipcars. We had CarToGo, but they're not going here anymore because they didn't have enough usage to keep them in our community. And I wanted to say to Matt, as we think about this, sometimes, like in Envision Eugene, when we have pillars and things, people don't really know what those pillars mean. And I think as we go through this plan, I think we have to be really transparent about, for instance, what Claire brought up about what are the land use things that we can do, that people can see in front of them the list of those things in a really clear way, and then the choices that council is going to make to try to move those things. So it's really clear to people what you're doing, why you're doing it, and what you're choosing to do, and what you think the results of that will be, and that we have those for the public and for us, all to sort of follow through as we go through this process. Because I think it will engage them with us in this, which is one of the biggest things that we have to do. Did you want to say something, Angus?
No. I agree.
Thank you.
Angus, thanks for coming down from Portland and spending the 45 minutes with us. I always had this thing about the meeting should last as long as the transportation that takes to get there, but that never works, it seems. The last few years, we've seen a decline in our emissions at the state level, and the cause of that, you said, was the Bush recession and--
Partial cause.
What?
Partial cause.
Yeah. But that's not sustainable. So are we on that trajectory? Are we still going down? Are we kind of going up? Are we staying flat?
Yeah. So, yeah, the unfortunate thing about recessions is, at some point, they end, right? And you have to deal--
As an effective greenhouse gas control, they're great, except they end.
And so you have to pile in again. I think the answer to this also goes to sort of to your goal setting, your target setting. It's good to have a science-based, long-term goal. It's also really good to have interim goals that allow you to really focus on the measures that are available to you today, the technologies that are available to you today, and how you use those to hit those interim goals. This is why our commission adopted, last year adopted, a 2035 goal. Looked like we weren't going to hit the 2020 goal, but we thought that there was a better opportunity to hit the 2035 goal. And those lines you saw with the two electric utilities suggested, yes, we can do that. So I guess the answer to you, Alan, is if this bill passes, then I think it is more likely than not that we will hit our 2035 goal for electric utilities and for transportation. And we may hit them for the energy, that energy efficiency wedge as well. We still have industry and ag and forestry where we're not making the kinds of gains that we need to make. But that's because we're trying to be strategic in focusing our measures. So if we get things in place, tools in place that get us to our goals for transportation, for utilities, our two big ones, then we've got time to turn and work on those other sectors and try to bring them down to target that 2035 goals as well. So, I mean, the answer to your question is, bill passes, we are definitely on a downward slant. We're not on the downward slant that we need to be. And I guess the one other thing I would make mention of, so it goes back to the observation about all that coal by wire coming into the state. Mostly, Oregon has an inside-the-boundaries inventory. Any emission that originates inside our boundaries, we count. But because we were importing so much coal by wire, it's such a big part of what we do that affects greenhouse gas emissions, we decided early on, you had to include that as well. So that's what we would call a consumption-based inventory, and you guys are, I know, familiar with that as well. So we have a partial inside-the-boundary and a partial consumption-based. And about five years ago, we sat down with the EQ and said, well, what if we looked at an entire consumption-based? What if we took another perspective on this and looked just at a consumption-based? Any emissions originating in Oregon with a good or service that goes out of state, we net out. But we then start counting all of the emissions associated with building all those flat-screen TVs in China and importing them to Oregon and using them and disposing of them here. Interestingly, our emissions inventory increased by about 12 or 13%. Well, of course it did. We're a relatively wealthy state. You're a relatively wealthy community. We are offshoring a lot of the emissions that we used to, that used to originate within this country. It's another way of looking at it, and it is something that we, as a state, think we need to go back and revisit our targeting as well. And so what we may end up with is two different targets. One, a traditional one, which is what you saw, but a second one that is targeted specifically at that consumption-based inventory, and how we take responsibility for those emissions that we sent out of state, but we're still responsible for by our consumption habits.
Yeah. One of the things I've noticed, and you mentioned the Global Warning Commission interim goal, is that most people are doing this long-term reach goal that they want to strive for, and then having some kind of interim goal that makes, that gets established so you can get a better sense of getting to a target. Because jumping from where we are now to that long-term goal seems very daunting and almost impossible. So having this interim goal seems to be a way of getting people to move towards that goal, but having it by interim. Can you talk to that as a strategy?
Yeah, just very briefly. So we assume there are going to be technologies emerging as controlling carbon exerts a pull, both a market and a regulatory pull on the economy, on inventors. I have often said that if we adopt a carbon cap nationally or as a state, the second most important thing about it is it will compel people to bring their emissions down in compliance with the cap. But the most important thing it does is it sends a signal out into the economy, into particularly the private sector, that says, if you come up with a really smart way of doing something that's a lot less carbon intensive, you're going to make buckets of money. And sending that signal into the economy, short-term, medium-term, is really important because we're not going to hit those long-term goals with the technologies we have. We will hit them with the technologies that we force into the marketplace, like bringing the cost of wind and solar and storage down. So it is important, given our existing technologies, that we have an interim goal that those existing technologies enable us plausibly to hit. That's what you saw when you saw those two electric utility lines. We have the technology today to hit those. We don't necessarily have the technology to hit them in a cost-effective way, but between now and 2030, when that RPS ramps in and the coal ramps out, we expect that the cost of wind and solar and storage are all three going to be down to a point where they're going to be cost competitive with wherever gas is on average between now and 2030. And they will blow coal out of the water. So having an interim goal allows you to look at the technologies you have today, draw a line between them, and what is achievable if you fully deploy them. So that also goes to your land use choices, to mode shift from single-occupant vehicles to transit bike, PED, CarToGo, all of the other options that we need to have on a transportation basis. Those are the real values, I think, of the interim goals. And there's a psychological value, too. And that is, you give people a target they can hit. It's probably a little bit like dieting. If you say, I'm going to lose 20 pounds this year, well, that's a lot of pounds to lose. If you say, I'm going to lose five pounds in the next three months, that's a doable target. Well, it's doable for some of us. I'm still having difficulty. So I think it's important psychologically as well as technologically, Alan.
Yeah, one last question or request. You talked about the wedge analysis and how all these actions take place at different levels, the energy efficiency, transportation, waste, agriculture, power generation, and the carbon tax to get us down there. And breaking that down even further, you have federal, state, and local actions that get us there. And I guess for Matt, what are the local actions that we'll be responsible for, besides the very important one of advocating for those state and federal policies that reduce those greenhouse gases, like Senate Bill 1574, the cap and trade bill, and House Bill 4036, which is the Clean Energy and Coal Transition Act, which are coming up? Besides advocating for that stuff, what are the, can you get us a list of the things that we're going to be looking at at a local level? Because we're not responsible for all of it to get us to that line. The things that we can grapple with, like the land use and the transportation and bike ped and electric vehicles, and maybe draw off the scenario planning analysis that the MPC did that looked at our transportation system to get us to a lower carbon footprint. There's a lot of actions in there, too, that are at the local level that we can. So if we can get a list of those things, that would be very helpful, I think, for the next round of things.
Yeah. And I'll just say that we are looking to refresh our list of climate, carbon reduction strategies. It will be, starting with what we have already on the books, the Climate Action Plan, which has a bunch of those, but then refreshing that, and then really calculating how much reduction can we get from each of those strategies. So that's definitely in the queue.
And I would really encourage you to keep, get consumption and waste management clearly on your list as well. They tend to drop out because we focus on the transportation and land use authorities of local governments. But that's something that has to be done at a community level also.
Right, yeah. And the federal and state issues are going to be the bulk of this. So we're going to be working on our portion of it, but it's not the whole thing.
Right.
Okay, yeah, if we get that. Good, thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I'll try to go quick. Something you mentioned about New York City really got my brain going. We are debating how to deal with population growth and the impact on the environment of the community. And we've just been given information that indicates that single-family homes are more env- environmentally positive than apartment buildings for energy consumption and environmental desirability. And I won't dispute the fact that three single-family homes with nine people in them are probably more environmentally sustainable than an apartment building with 50 in them. But the issue that we're wrestling with is if you have, I'm looking for the apples to apples. If you've got 10,000 people all in single-family homes and 10,000 people in multifamily housing, are the single-family homes still environmentally overall the better choice than putting them in multifamily housing? And the reason I brought this up, as you mentioned, New York City being very environment...
Well, carbon-efficient.
Carbon-efficient, that's the word I'm looking for. We're getting information that says if we keep everybody in single-family homes, that's more carbon-efficient. It's better than putting multifamily housing.
I have never seen a credible study that, and I certainly haven't seen all the studies out there, so maybe there is one, but I have never seen a credible study that says that single-family detached dwellings are more carbon-efficient than multifamily dwellings. And intuitively, I don't see how that could be the case. Assuming the same number of people are involved in both cases as you did, multifamily, think about the shell of a single-family house and how much exposure it has with walls and windows, all of which leak. Even the best insulated house leaks. And let's stipulate that they are sort of equally well-insulated. Then think about a multifamily dwelling where only the outside wall leaks, but most of the walls in my apartment simply separate me from the family in the next apartment. And so if it leaks, it leaks in both directions and it's stable. You're not losing energy, you're not losing heat energy out of those walls. There are other considerations with multifamily housing as well. But again, the most important one from my perspective is if you can locate multifamily dwellings in transit corridors, then they reinforce the carbon efficiency of the transportation system as well. So I'd be really interested in seeing, whatever the study is that you've been provided with that suggested such a counterintuitive outcome, because it doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, it's a longer conversation for another time. I just wanted to get the benefit of a certified smart person that we happen to have sitting here.
Well, I didn't bring a certified smart person with me, but next time I will.
Thank you.
Betty, you're up.
Oh, thank you. First, I'm glad the mayor mentioned Lrapah, Lane Regional Air Protection Agency, which it was there that the chargers for the bus truck stops started, an employee of Lrapah. I think we should emphasize the importance of not expanding the urban growth boundary. I'm thinking of things we can do locally rather than waiting for the state and federal, preserving the forests and the agricultural land. Also, we established a goal of the ratio of single-family to multifamily some time ago, and I think we did it the wrong way. Well, I said that so at the time, but as I remember, we said 60/40, was that it?
Forty-five, fifty-five.
Forty-five, fifty-five, but fifty-five would be single-family.
Five, single-family.
And that should be reversed, I think. But actually, it should be a bigger, the single-family residences that are there now should be allowed to stay, obviously. But for future, it seems to me that it would make more sense to say 60 multifamily, 40 single-family, for example. What's your opinion of that?
You know, I think each community is going to have to figure out where its balancing point is, because this is, you know, we don't do, we shouldn't be doing anything on the basis of carbon efficiency alone. One of the real potential advances, and I'll just put a little plug in it here for it with the Eugene City Council, one of the real advances in tools that we have in this state is something called Mosaic, which was developed by the Department of Transportation and some consulting firms and a stakeholder group. And it is an effort to try to take the lessons learned in least-cost planning in the utility side and see the extent to which we can adjust them and apply them to transportation decisions as well. And the really interesting thing about Mosaic is it forces the trade-offs between, for example, the amenities of single-family versus the amenities of multifamily, the carbon efficiency of each one of those, safety, local air pollution. All of those considerations can be pulled together in this kind of a planning process and this kind of a planning tool. And then the city council or the community or stakeholders can say, what's most important to me? And they wait, they may wait carbon efficiency as more important than single-family dwelling. They may wait safety as more important than carbon efficiency. But at least those trade-offs are highly visible and transparent, as they have become over the last several decades in the electrical utility industry. And you're able to make those kinds of trade-offs. So you can look at, you don't just look at single-family versus multifamily in isolation. You can do that, if you want to, by just zeroing out the waiting for everything else, but you probably won't. So that gives you an opportunity for the city of Eugene to come up with a plan, which is not the same as the city of Portland and not, God forbid, the same as New York City. I don't think any of us here want to live in New York City for all of its carbon efficiency. I certainly don't. But there are things about New York City that can transfer here. And using Mosaic as a way of analyzing your transportation choices in a corridor is a really useful way of both forcing carbon efficiency into the equation, but putting it in its proper place.
What's more proper than breathing?
Then you wait breathing and local air quality higher. You can zero out everything else.
Another question. We're getting more and more air conditioners. They used to almost not exist in the Northwest.
You and I can remember that, can't we?
Yes. And isn't that really bad for the air quality?
Our air conditioners?
Yes.
That's probably going to get me out ahead of my technology headlights. What I can say is that there are some public health reasons, as the climate grows warmer, there are some public health reasons for having more air conditioning. And I think we just have to deal with that. That's one of the ways you deal particularly with the potential for heat stroke. Less of an issue here than it is going to be, say, in Chicago or Wichita or Abilene. But the real challenge, I think, air conditioning has for us is when it's a discretionary choice. And by the way, I don't have air conditioning in my house in Portland, and I can live with it. But some people will choose to have, more and more will choose to have air conditioning. So the real issue then becomes, as with automobiles, are we feeding that air conditioner the most carbon-efficient electricity that we can? And is that air conditioning the most energy and carbon efficient that it can be? A lot of window air conditioners is not a very efficient way to air condition your house, for example.
Well, having lived in Illinois without an air conditioner, I don't think it's essential here.
My family's all from Illinois, too, and I remember those summers. And they had their own special charm, I admit, but you did sweat a lot.
Well, you can live without it.
Yes.
Buses, which you were talking about, the advantages of buses, I see the buses putting out a lot of smoke.
Yep.
And it looks to me as if they're polluting snootches of four or five cars at least.
So I don't know where Eugene is in converting its bus fleet. I know that TriMet is, from my perspective, way behind. And it's because diesel buses are cheaper and diesel fuel is cheaper short-term, but neither of those are cheaper long-term. So that's another major conversion that we have to make. Even diesel buses, if their load factors are high enough, are a lot more carbon-efficient than individual automobiles with single drivers.
LTD, just, all MXs are hybrids and they just bought new hybrids, too.
Is it your turn?
Alan can do with a rolled-up newspaper from time to time.
I was a teacher. I'm confused about cap and trade. Isn't that just putting it somewhere else?
It depends on how comprehensive the cap and trade is. And one of the criticisms of this bill in the legislature right now is that if we stop coal by wire from coming into Oregon, are we really, are those coal plants ever going to turn around and sell their coal somewhere else and the emissions continue? And the answer, in both cases, is somewhere in between. If we adopt cap and trade as a country, but the Chinese are still building both coal plants and our television sets using electricity from those coal plants, have we simply offshored our emissions? And the answer is, that's why the president tried to cut a deal with China. And it remains to be seen whether that deal holds. But the only way we get to emissions controls that are meaningful is if the entire planet agrees to do it, or nearly all of the planet agrees to it, and certainly large emitters like China and India. But the only way we get them to do it is we do it ourselves. And a cap and trade is, if it's done right, is a pretty efficient way of reducing emissions. It has been used for a number of criteria pollutants like sulfur dioxide and nitrous oxides, and it has turned out to be a much more cost-efficient way of driving those emissions down. Yes, it means someone else, I'm reducing my emissions, someone else is increasing theirs. But if overall the cap continues to decline, then what we're trying to do is find the most cost-efficient place to reduce the emissions. That's why it works.
Disperse the pollution.
Not disperse the pollution, but find which plant can reduce emissions most cost-effectively. Then they can sell some of their reductions, as it were, to a plant that can reduce it less cost-effectively. But if overall the combined emissions from those two plants is lower at the end of the day than it was at the beginning of the day, then we're reducing overall emissions, even if we're changing the distribution.
It always confused me when we talked about trading.
It is confusing, I know.
I mean, trading, it just sounds like you get to do it because I'm not doing it. But thank you.
Yes.
So Mike, fast because...
Very fast for Matt, along the lines of what Claire was asking. Do we measure change over time of the amount of people who live in Eugene and work in Eugene versus live outside Eugene and work in Eugene? Do we measure the change in that over time?
In that ratio?
Yeah.
Not as a part of our carbon accounting. I suspect that planning measures that, but I don't know.
So we don't look at, are our policies driving more people to live outside the community and drive in every day for work?
That's not currently, right, part of our greenhouse gas...
We're not even measuring.
Right, we're not measuring the, not within our greenhouse gas and our carbon...
But I think the urban growth boundary and the density requirements inside and outside do have an effect on the migration question you're raising.
Right, yeah. And that's why I was wondering, are we even measuring to know whether or not we're causing an inadvertent problem against our goals? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep. I will tell you, on my time on the Northwest Power Council, I seem to always go out and meet with the city council in Hermiston or someplace like that that wanted to protect their dams and their reservoirs and didn't care all that much about the fish. So it's nice to come in and talk to a very different city council. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move very rapidly now, but not rapidly enough, into the two motions that Alan has asked to put before you.
Actually, I'll just combine them. I moved to the council to support Senate Bill 1574, the cap and trade bill, and House Bill 4036, the Clean Energy and Coal Transition Act. And if I get a second?
Second.
Moved to second.
Just, I think these are two very important bills. They're coming up on the House floor, maybe this week, in the short session. And while the cap and trade bill may be stuck for now, it might move out of committee. The Clean Energy Coal Bill is certainly going to be on the Senate floor. They're both very consistent with what we've been talking about and getting us, and Angus was very eloquent about how it will reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Specifically, on the cap and trade bill, just for folks who are not that familiar with that, the cap and trade bill says we cap emissions and then we lower the emissions that are possible within the state every year. And within that reduction, you can either reduce your own emissions or buy someone else's reductions in emissions so that each year we actually get a reduction in emissions. And that's what they've seen in California. This is based on the California experience, which has been extremely successful. The money from the cap and trade system in California, which has realistically reduced greenhouse gas emissions, is going back into more projects to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So it's, and by the way, California, because they're so big, that amount of money is now $2.4 billion that's going back into greenhouse gas projects of all sorts, of transportation and social equity programs that deal with low-income folks and make sure that they are not taking the brunt of this, but energy efficiency and all sorts of different kinds of projects.
So I think Ethan's on the phone, is that correct?
He is on the phone if we have questions or wants to speak to it.
Questions? He's here. And I, so far, I don't know if I got everybody. I heard various kinds of things go out of people's mouths. I wasn't quite sure what I was getting, but I got Chris. Is anybody else in the queue? Mike? Okay. Chris?
Yeah, just quickly, I understand that the IGR committee does not have a specific position on these two, but I did want to know what staff's perspective was. I assume they have edited these, and I wanted to know if staff has a perspective on them, whether they're consistent with policy and they support them. I just want to know where staff is on them.
That's Ethan.
I'm sorry, I'm picking up a little bit of staff. Is that Counselor Pryor asking what the status of these two bills are?
The staff position.
Staff position, Ethan.
Okay. On the...
Hold on, Ethan, one second. It's just whether it's consistent with our legislative policies.
Right.
Yes. On the cap and trade bill, we have direction from council from a resolution regarding, specifically states, for city staff to lobby in support of statewide carbon pricing. That was also incorporated into the legislative priorities this last year, documented by the IGR and councils reviewed. And staff, our position was support, and Counselors Lake provided testimony for that bill early on when it hit the floor. That one currently is in a Senate, the Joint Ways and Means Committee awaiting a subcommittee designation, so that one is kind of in limbo right now. The, excuse me, the second House Bill 4036, that we really don't have a position on, and the main piece is because whether that bill passes or not, it will not directly impact power in Eugene. And so there is not a position on that one, we were just tracking it.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Mike.
Mike?
Ethan, I was wondering if you could tell me what our voting on this motion of Alan's will do for your work there that you haven't done already or that Alan's speaking on our behalf hasn't done already?
Specific to 1574.
To either of these bills.
Madam Mayor, Counselor Clark, I think that a motion from council would be showing support to our legislative delegation, specifically the chief sponsor, Senator Chris Edwards, and the co-sponsor, Senator Byer. So I think more than anything, it would continue to create a supportive relationship.
So we haven't given them support yet? My question was, what would it do that we have not yet done?
Madam Mayor, Counselor Clark, once again, I would say that we have given support on the Senate bill yet. It would just continue to build that support and show that Eugene is behind them. And so that's where I think we...
Alan? Alan?
Yeah, three things. As we noted, not only do we need to do our local actions, but we need to support those things that are at the state level that reduce greenhouse gases. These two things are directly related to that. That's why I brought them up today, and besides, they're in the Senate floor. So need to advocate for state policies, even though they don't necessarily impact us at the local level, is an important thing for us to do. We do not have a position on 4036, which would create a position. And secondarily, 1574 is a bill that was, as Ethan mentioned, sponsored by two of our local senators, Senator Edwards and Senator Byer. And I think they deserve the counsel saying we support this, not indirectly through a resolution that we passed a year and a half ago. So I think putting our stamp on both of these as approval is a worthy thing for us to do. And I encourage council to support it.
Ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition? None? So it passes. Vote pass.
Madam Mayor, I vote yes.
Oh, sorry, George, I didn't even know you were there. Sorry. All right.
You're listening.
Okay. All right. That makes seven in favor. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on rapidly. I guess I'll ask the question.
It's going to be tough. I think her... The presentation's going to be just about the amount, if not a little bit more than what we have left. So I don't know whether you want to start it and have done this before and we end up having kind of a really not full conversation. So I don't know if it's the most effective.
Eddie?
I would prefer to wait. I was the one who asked for this work session, and I don't see really what I asked for. I want impossible motions to, not about behavior, but about residences, about houses that are nuisances.
All kinds of nuisance.
Well, all kinds, but not so much behavior. And I... The examples I gave were Brown's... One of them was Brownsville, and the other was either the Dallas or Dallas. I know they're not alike, but I thought you would have that record. And we didn't have either one of those in our materials. They're two places that have very good nuisance ordinances, and I was hoping to...
Give us time for you to...
Right. Well, let me just clarify what this work session was, which was a combination of, I think, Part III of your conversation that started with onsite management. The last time we were here, you had... We had indicated there was a couple of directions we might go to help deal with the behavior issues, which was the only thing we were talking about at the time. One of them was the local agent, and the other was a potential of a chronic nuisance code. And so we were directed to come back with that. Since that time, you brought forward the additional chronic nuisance issue in neighborhoods around boarded-up buildings. So we were trying to combine them into one work session because they essentially would fall into the same section of the code. So it's sort of Alan's onsite management and your boarded-up houses kind of need to come together. So if we can come back and we can bring back some potential motions for that, if that's...
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, we've talked about the social host ordinance quite a bit already, and so I don't think we really need to go over that so much. Was kind of under the same impression as Counselor Taylor, that would be more like for nuisance falling down houses and addressing eyesores and unsanitary things. And I'm glad that you put in the Portland code section. That was really good, but you know, I was going, well, gee, for comparison, why wasn't Eugene's code what we already have in place? And so if that could be included for the next one, as well as the request of Counselor Taylor, that would be good to get a grip. Because I'm like other councillors, I bet everyone here has probably received some complaints from some of their constituents about falling down shacks or half-burned-down buildings that no one's dealt with for years. And so I think Counselor Taylor's intent was more in that direction of...
I think they got that, and I do think that part of the conversation that we're talking about was not the social host ordinance. It was really that other conversation that Alan brought up a long time ago, was that requiring somebody on-site to...
On-site management of apartment buildings.
Right. That's the issue. So those issues are still both out there.
Right.
Yep. Did you...
There are two different things, I think.
Yep.
And the things that I thought was urgent before another hot summer was the abandoned buildings. And they aren't always falling down. Sometimes there are nice homes that, for some reason, people have left them, and there's firewood piled up and dry vegetation, and the rats take over, and people are terrified that there's going to be a fire, for one thing, but they're worried about also about the rats reproducing. And I would like to see some sample ordinances so that we could take action on something. And I know Brownsville had a very good policy, and I'm not sure now what the other one was. I said it in a council meeting at one time, but two at least, I know that where they do inspections and they have strong policies to protect the neighborhood. Thank you.
I've got Chris and Mike and Alan. Chris?
Yeah, I saw the thing neighborhood livability, and that just kind of goes into a big area. So I appreciate you saying this is what we really wanted to talk about, but there may be an opportunity here that if we could have an entire work session, we could talk about these subjects. I think we could go through them, hopefully, fairly quickly. But I know, as a councillor, probably the single most source of complaints I get are about livability issues, which go beyond unruly gatherings and derelict buildings, parking, trash, barking dogs. I mean, if there's one thing you can do to demonstrate your responsiveness to your constituents, it's in dealing with this host of neighborhood nuisance liability issues. And so I don't want to just suddenly pile a whole bunch of additional work on you, but I know we can talk about the things that you were going to talk about, and I'm just going to be chomping at the bit to say, okay, can we talk about turkeys? You know, can we talk about barking dogs? Can we talk about people driving down streets and parking and throwing trash and other things out their car windows? So figuring out a way, whether it's in two work sessions or whatever, but I think the whole issue of neighborhood livability is much larger than this. So I'm just putting it out there that I can think of a host of things that the community would really appreciate if we could get more clarity and direction on.
Thanks. People are chomping at the bit to clarify.
Yeah, that's right.
Mike's going to want to talk about nutrients.
Them, too. I still think there's a solution for that. Five dollars a tail bounty. But anyway, I hope we're going to talk about enforcement as a part of this because an ongoing nuisance has, you know, a part of... A part of that problem deals with the manner and the level at which we enforce. But for me, our city, on a broader level, has a very imbalanced manner for code enforcement on minor issues. So, for example, I have a neighbor who has, you know, a complaint-based call because his chickens are too loud, and one of them or two of them got away and were running around in the neighborhood. And he had a couple of different people calling and dealing with enforcement and sending him a letter and threatening a fine. And then there are some much, in the view of most of my constituents, there are other larger nuisance issues that, no matter how much people complain, have no enforcement. So I would hope that that's a part of our discussion, how we have an equality of enforcement with nuisance codes, or how we deal with enforcement better than we do today. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, this came out of the request to talk about onsite management of apartment complexes. And if you recall that, what we were wanting to look at was those large apartment complexes in like the South University neighborhood that did have onsite management versus the ones that didn't. Turned out that it didn't matter if they had onsite management. Those weren't really the problem either. It was the other smaller ones and the single-family homes that were the issue. And while we were looking at that, we uncovered all these other jurisdictions that had, especially college towns, that had these nuisance ordinances, various kinds of them. And what I wanted to do is bring that back for a conversation about that. And it's not just about the behaviors, but there are behaviors that need to be dealt with, that are outside the social host ordinance. That's a specific criminal thing that are being done. But there are other things and properties that aren't cared for that are eyesores, that are abandoned. What do we do about those? And really, what these other nuisance ordinances have done is create accountability mechanisms, as we did with the social host ordinance that is working great, by the way, that go beyond what we do now, which really isn't that much. Our nuisance enforcement system is pretty bare bones. And also talk about how maybe community standards or neighborhood standards can impact that and what neighbors can do to take on some of that accountability role, to assess those livability issues, which is really where this comes from, as Chris mentioned.
Claire?
So it looks like we're having a little mini work session after all.
I was going to say, we're going to get a takeaway from not having a work session. This is a first.
We're taking advantage of the opportunity.
So I just wanted to add to what other councillors have already said, that it's not just in residential areas. So there was just an article in the paper recently about a particular property right by my house that's on a major thoroughfare, 7th and Monroe, that has been derelict for a number of years and right now is a terrible, terrible eyesore. And I really fear that it's going to look like that for the next 10 years with a big black tarp on the side of it. And I really, really hope that that is not allowed by our code. So I think in addition to residential neighborhoods and the impacts that buildings being left abandoned have, I would want to learn about what our enforcement is for commercial and industrial sites that might also have a very negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, so it sounds like, in addition to what Rochelle has already prepared, just a broader discussion about what we're really doing around code enforcement, period. So kind of a 101, what's in the code, what we do, and then here's some places you could go with improvements.
And what can we do?
I'd also ask you to think about separating the two. I think the issues that you were separate from the ones you were, that maybe we could have those discussions separately. Because I think once we get into the general nuisance category, you're into a whole, as you just observed, a...
More than one million.
A huge range of things, and I think this is a little different than...
Okay.
Maybe you disagree. I don't...
Okay.
I'm just saying, think about that.
Well, it'll be the same people, so I was trying to figure out if there was a way to...
Okay. I just...
That's okay. We can... We'll find a way to separate the conversation so it makes sense and...
Too big.
Yes, that's what I was thinking. Okay. Thank you all very much, and that'll be it for today. Thanks.
And with that, we're back to the turkeys.